Eight twenty-ninth, June twelfth, June thirteenth, June fourteenth. That's what the meeting manager. Eight twenty-ninth and the others were June twelve. Thirteen and fourteen were all good to make, but.
Take a motion, we approve the minutes of May twenty-ninth, June twelfth, June thirteenth, and June fourteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
Well, Chris has made a motion and Mark has seconded it to approve the minutes of May twenty-nine, June thirteenth, June twelfth, June thirteenth, and June fourteenth. All those in favor? Part of the report. You're right. I think I'm the only one here.
Well, Justin's on.
Okay. Uh, so getting us, uh, I don't have any prepared reports, so bear with me. Um, I'll speak first on behalf of Police Department Chief Ferland, apparently can't be here this evening. Just clearing the scene. Fire Department, uh, been busy, a lot of storm-related calls, a lot of trees down, wires down. And that, uh, I think not too much went on structure fire-wise other than mutually, uh, we've got a couple out in turn recently, a little big one's on Upper Street. Tomorrow night, we're gonna be playing in the water, but storms don't hit us, they hit us last Thursday, so we just postponed our boat operations. So, tomorrow night, we'll be combining boat operations with water rescues, so we'll be out on Cocknoy, Oregon doing that, probably between six-thirty and Saturday, we're gonna be going to Boston with the junior firefighters, uh, there'll be four or five adults with them, you know, taking, I think there were five juniors, right? We're gonna go down on the train to Portland, we'll be at a cell station, or one of the firehouses. And you know, all, see some attractions down there, it's nice, nice, feel-good day with the juniors, try to do that once a year, something. Uh, beach party's coming up, uh, July sixth, so we'll start some social media blasts on that in the next couple of days. Getting the word out, flyers already went out. All the sponsorships have come in, t-shirts are being done up as we speak. But we'll have those ready for the event, and our twelve sponsors. And other than that, Museum's on the one, really nice, uh, platform's going up as we speak, uh, going with just old, old-fashioned platforms, it's gonna be painted white. It's gonna be a little bit different from the other museum buildings that are all yellow down there, so our project needs to be a little different. We're hoping to paint the doors red, it's fire engine red. We did meet with a landscaper, a hardscaper, landscaper, an engineer, uh, as far as the nine-eleven memorial park. Excited about that, um, partner up with Gagne and Son, um, work with us and put in a nice new stone retaining wall, some nice green grass and like whole and everything for the memorial, it's gonna be really nice down there, so excited about that. Still shooting September seventh, so, trust our fingers, we'll get it done by then. And you're in the fundraiser, so. Oh, it's all coming together. Any questions?
Did I read correctly, there were millions of dollars of gold bars that were retrieved from a house there?
Yes. I don't know if that's been made public, it was like your eyes only.
Oh, sorry. I saw it, I saw it too, my eyes right now. Amazing.
So.
Amazing.
It is, I'll tell you the story after the meeting. Any other questions? I'm sorry, that's a mess. Have a good night, thank you.
Hi Julie, do you do wanna go?
Sure, I can be real quick, um, the, the library is working on summer reading programs. And, uh, still having the back of my mind to, to do something at, at the beach waterfront, um, if, if that works out for us. Um, we, we got feedback, I'm gonna have to contact the town's attorney to get a little bit of language for a waiver for a kayak loan. Um, and we'd have PFDs and it would be, um, they, under sixteen, they'd have to have an adult with them. Um, and other than that, we might do, um, I think we've talked about maybe doing yoga there and love on a leash and some other, some other programs, not to interfere with rec, just, just to add to their schedule. And, um, I, I just wanted to give a shout out to our Saturday, July thirteenth Bigfoot program. We're having Mike Famalant, um, come and talk about his experiences tracking Sasquatch, Bigfoot, whatever we like to call our favorite cryptid. And, um, I wanna make, make sure people know and spread the word that it's at eleven o'clock that Saturday, July thirteenth. That's it, unless people have questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Justin?
Um, just a couple real quick things, uh, I've, I've shared this with you, but just so the public knows too. Um, we expect paving from Backstreet to Old Lewiston Road on the Wilson Pond Road to be done sometime the week of July ninth. Um, Tony is currently working with that, with the vendor, we're piggybacking on a, on a Winthrop, um, bid they put out last year and they're, the, the company's willing to honor those prices for us because Winthrop has to do a section of that road, which is in Winthrop. So, uh, Tony's trying to get that same bid price, cause it's a good price right now, um, and hopefully he can negotiate something to get the, that done on the town farm road about the same time, so we may be able to get some paving done much earlier than we expected. Uh, I still haven't received the final draft of the audit yet, it's nothing on our side, it's just a matter of Casey um, getting it into his schedule so that he can do the final approval on it and then send us a copy, once I have that, I will schedule them to come in, um, as you requested, and Tony should be at your next meeting, if you would like him to, to discuss salt priority and what we might be able to do moving forward now that the, the, that the salt shed was, um, turned down by the voters. Uh, other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Uh, Justin, should we be looking at having another election to, uh, fund the general administration? And, and maybe a couple other little things in the near future?
That's up to you, um, I don't think it's practical for us to get another election put together in time for us to do ballots. Um, the, the voters did approve our tax bill, um, deadline, so we still have to, the taxes are still due, um, when they're due. I think, um, I think I can manage this the best I can for now, and if it, if it comes to it, I could come back to you sometime next winter, and then we could discuss if we needed more money, we could just ask the town to appropriate it out of the unassigned fund balance to make up whatever um, emergency gap we might have, you know, running through the rest of the year, if that, if that's the, uh, uh, tack that you folks are comfortable with, I think we can make that work. Because part of the issue is, is by, is by the admin budget being turned down, that's also where we pay for the elections. So now I, I don't, you know, I'd like to not hold another election because they cost money and we have less money to work with, so.
Just, Justin, um, can we go back to the issue of the audit? Cause we're look, we're looking at, on, we're, it sounds like we're on the verge of receiving the audit for not last fiscal year, but the year prior to that. Has there been any discussion with the auditing, uh, firm about last fiscal year and getting ourselves caught up in time? Or, uh, uh, our budgeting process starts in January?
Right, so they're prepared to start on the next audit as soon as this one's completed, they need this one to be done so that they can build off of that for the next one. Again, we're gonna run into a problem because the admin budget is where we pay for the audits. So there was extra money in there to pay for two years' worth of audits in the, in the budget that was turned down, so we don't have enough money to complete two audits in one year unless we cut somewhere else to pay for it, so. Um, I'm not saying we can't get it done, I'll just have to be creative with you folks about how we're gonna, um, how we're gonna accomplish it.
Do you have a sense, um, if we were to move forward with sort of the continuing resolution version of the admin budget, do you have a sense of, um, any impact on the hours of, uh, town hall? Being open to the public?
Yeah, uh, Lori was, was out on vacation right after the election. And then, uh, me and her have only had about six hours working together over the past two weeks. So we haven't been able to do all the calculations on, on what, what, what we're, you know, contractually obligated to pay for, such as some of those things are, um, um, like the, like the comp plan. That money was in there to pay for the remainder of the comp plan and to pay Isabel to stay on as the planner for the planning board. We've already contracted ourselves to those expenses, so I have to, I, I have to figure out what portions of that budget I can't do anything about and which ones I can. And then I'll have to come to you to decide whether we're going to, um, obviously, um, our union employees will get their raises because we're we're obligated, but we may not give them out to any of the frontline staff in the town office. Or we may have to redo, reduce the town office operating hours. But until I have a plan or I don't have a suggestion for you tonight, so it is on my radar screen, but we'll have to talk about that moving forward.
Uh, I, I see we have our waterfront director in the audience, and I know that there was probably some news from the beach.
Wanna wait for a public comment?
He's the department head, so it makes sense that she would make a report while the department heads are making reports.
Sure. Lisa, you have?
I don't have much to report because I'm not allowed to make any of those decisions, so, um, I've had, we've had people apply, and that's as far as it's gone, um, so. All I got right now.
How many applications do you have?
Uh, I believe there's been four or five in then.
And what's the, Lisa, what's the holdup on processing of those applications and actually making a hire?
Uh, according to what guys have designed, I'm not allowed to make any of those decisions.
So. Uh, there's an interview process involved with those?
Yes. The, the applications have gone to Lori.
Justin, can you tell us the, uh, status of the four or five applications that have been submitted for lifeguard and attendants?
Uh, no, I, I can't, I'd have to ask Lori, she's, she's in Massachusetts today, I, I haven't talked to her this week, really. But she's the one that's gonna process the applications, I don't get involved in, 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 in interviewing frontline staff, so it's really a conversation to have, uh, 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 with, between Lisa and Lori.
Oh, Lisa, so you haven't been able to start any swim programs?
Yeah, not, I have not been given the opportunity.
Blackboard report.
Uh, I moved to authorize the board chair to work with the town's attorney to effectuate an agreement regarding the waterfront director position for the summer of twenty twenty-four. That's a motion.
I'll second that.
Yes, and motion, Chris has seconded. To have, uh, the board chair work with the town's attorney to effectuate an agreement regarding the waterfront director position for the summer of twenty twenty-four.
Oops.
I was in favor.
Well, I thought we had jawed that.
Well, we haven't made anything public since we came out of executive session, so we had to make a public. And that's what the town attorney gave us too.
That's from Ann. If you wanted. Justin? Do you do anything about that?
Excuse me, was there a question? I'm sorry, I was, I was joking.
There was a, uh, uh, Ann, our attorney, uh, had, uh, had, asked, uh, somebody in the board to make a motion to authorize the board chair to work with the town's attorney to effectuate an agreement regarding the waterfront director position for the summer of twenty twenty-four?
Yes, so you guys have an agreement, but you have to, you have to, you have to authorize the chair to do that in a public session because you haven't, you never took a vote in a public session to, uh, say that, so you're sort of, you're sort of doing it backwards, but you still have to have a public vote about to authorize you to do just that. Does that make sense?
Okay, it does. And it involve, does it involve the contract that was, uh, signed and all that?
That's correct.
Okay. And, and, so what does this lead to? Just the.
It leads to, uh, a, a, a public announcement of a, an agreement and a closing of the chapter.
That's correct.
Uh, oh. Are there, there a motion by Kent, seconded by Chris? To, for this, uh, motion, uh, all those in favor? Thank you. So there, so this, uh, there is an agreement that has, that, uh, Lisa has signed to, uh, work as a waterfront director position this summer. It's still like a public, public announcement, I guess, as far as we know, yeah. To, uh,
There are other select orders.
All right, there you go.
Yeah, select orders. And then you have, so, I don't see any sense in signing this one, that's good.
Well, the new one hasn't been signed by the.
Yes, exactly.
Which is a new select person, so you can be.
So I have, uh, thought. Um, I we heard at our last meeting that there was an award of three point five million dollars, or at least we got on the shortlist, or award the town of Monmouth is on the shortlist for congressionally designated funding for the North Monmouth Water Project. And that brings our project total in North Monmouth, uh, to something like six point something million dollars out of a seven point five million dollar, uh, estimated budget from a couple of years ago. And I would suggest that perhaps we should express our gratitude to Senator Collins' office. And direct the town manager to invite Senator Collins or representative of Senator Collins' office to come make a presentation to us about where that money comes from, how it was that it, uh, uh, was given to the town of Monmouth. And give them a couple of minutes of our time at some meeting, either next one or the one following. Uh, uh, through an invitation, could be a letter or an email, either way. Uh, but it would make sense to me that we should show some gratitude to Senator Collins for, uh, putting that project over the hump, close to the end in terms of, uh, fundraising.
This is, and what you're suggesting you think is a proper thing to do?
I think it is, I think we should ask Senator Collins to, uh, come tell us about, uh, how she was able to pull that off. Justin, did you get that?
Yes, I'm happy to do it, if, if, if you want, I will, I'll extend an invitation and I'll find out when, when they might, when she or somebody on our staff might be available, sure, I'll take care of that.
That would be soon.
Thank you. Wonderful.
Anything else from the board?
Next, uh, is a public comment.
I'd like to thank the board for finalizing the beach program and the waterfront director. That is really good news, I'm a little concerned with the disconnect on the, the applications of certified lifeguards ready to go to work. Hopefully that can get resolved soon, but I do wanna thank you.
Just Steve.
And I have a question, uh, has anyone done accounting of how much was spent on legal fees to settle the beach issue? Uh, has that been done, have you reviewed it, uh, is that something that can be made public, the total amount that's been spent on legal?
I'm sure we haven't received a bill yet.
I do know that we pay our attorney two hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour. And that, uh, well, maybe Justin can, can give us a more specific um, uh, estimate of the legal expenses. Uh, but it's any time that we have spent uh, time with the town council. Um, we've been doing so to be very careful to respect the law. Be a good employer. And to offer, uh, every town employee, uh, the privacy that they are due.
We have that estimate of the cost.
Uh, that's a question for Justin, Justin, do you have an estimate of how much that's cost?
No, I don't yet, cause you haven't, you haven't, you haven't, you haven't completed all of your work with her yet, I can certainly, it, it's, it's certainly public information, Steve, so once I, once I have the final invoices from the, the meetings that, you know, the board's been having and discussions, we can absolutely make that public.
Uh, it's also important to note that whatever funding that we have spent on consulting with the town's attorney um, is miniscule in comparison with the potential liability if we were to make a mistake.
Yeah, I hate to be a pain again, but Article thirty-four, I think you people are depending too much on something that was meant to be very short-term only for critical services. You need to have a special town meeting to fund those articles that were voted down. Otherwise, if you keep depending on Article thirty-four, the voters can never do away with something that they wanna do away with. Now, they overwhelmingly voted down the beach budget. I don't happen to agree with voting down the beach budget, but in, I consulted with an attorney, that's attorney for a city, and he says you can't depend on that. You need to have a special town meeting with a budget and have the, in the same year have the voters approve that money. Now, I'm tired of, it costs too much to have votes. Have an open town meeting, get it done with. Saturday morning, give up two hours and come down here and vote on these things, if it's that important, do you come and show up? But at the moment, the voters overwhelmingly voted down a number of things that you people are totally ignoring. So you need to get to work and have a special town meeting. I'm getting to the point that I believe we should change to a selectman administrative assistant government. And I won't go into why I feel that way, but I think most of the people in town know why I feel that way. So let's get with it, let's get a budget together, and let's get an open special town meeting, now there are times that you have to have a public hearing on the thing. And you have to advertise it, and you have to do all of these things. It seems to me that everybody here wants to cop out on their job. If you don't like that job, get out, let someone else get in there. Thank you.
In response to Ed's, uh, comments, I read in another town, I think we may have to look back um, when that was voted in to do that, because there was another town close by, um, that just voted to do that, but in the wording of, we will now go to secret ballot until the, the voters overturn that and turn it back into an open town meeting. So we would wanna go back and look at that question, because we might not be able to do an open town meeting if ours was worded the same way. That that would have to, if we were gonna revert back, it may have to be done on the approval of voters.
Then let's do it.
But we'll, we'll look back and see what.
Let's do things legal, and if the voters say no, overwhelmingly say no in some of these, then you have to assume that the voters said no. And you're trying to override the voters. I know you don't agree with me, Kent.
I, uh, we would have to do the legal research to even find out if it's possible, I have no idea, so I haven't formed an opinion.
Well, there's a no vote, a majority no vote mean anything?
Means they turned down the article, and we, we have twelve, twelve articles out of the thirty-seven that were turned down.
You need to have a town meeting.
And, uh, that's not really, uh, we're relying on our, we're relying on the, the guy who runs the town, the town manager, uh. Do we have one? What? You? Do we have one? Do we have what? The town manager. We do. Yes. He's up there, right now. I got something. Despite, or in fact, what Ed said, even if you don't have a town meeting style thing, you still have to do the diligence about what the article says. People still need to be presented with the things that were voted down, if you choose to do it, you don't have to present them all that were voted down. You don't have to, we don't have to look at them all, but some of them you need, you need an administrative budget, you need to pay your bond issues. You need certain things done, now it's not okay to fall on the wall, yeah, to just let it slide all year and see how we do, that ain't okay. That's not okay. Most of the times, if people turn it down and you need that one article passed. Some, it may not be the same amount of money, but you need one passed by the voters. Whether or not they do it by a town meeting or whether they do it by articles that we come to vote on here. Okay? That's my opinion, you need to get on with that. Thank you. You?
My opinion is, even thirty-four works for a model, work's been done. So I don't necessarily agree with these gentlemen in this vote, um. It may be crisis times for the, I'm a little concerned with the administrative budget, but if Justin's saying he thinks he can find a way that funds available without. that funds available without going back to a special time meeting, then why do we have thirty-four if we're going to keep playing around and let's go back, let's go back, either get rid of it or keep it. Let's not have one foot in and one foot out. Well, that doesn't work.
Most people don't read Article thirty-four all the way through. It says until the approved budget that you people are dodging having it through the budget. Got to read it all the way through. People read the first part and say, oh, boy, we can keep right on a humming along. Second part says you got to get an approved budget.
Shall the town authorize the select board to make municipal expenditures based on the latest approved municipal budget? If the proposed budget in whole or part fails to pass until a proposed municipal budget in whole or in part is approved.
There you go.
On the administrative budget, what was the budget, how much difference was last year's budget from this year's budget? What's the difference in funding?
I, I'm, I'm going to do this off the top of my head. I don't have that right in front of me. It was about eighty thousand, but thirty thousand of that was for the comp plan. Some of it was for, was for wages. We typically give the non-union staff the same wage increase that the union staff gets. So some of that is in there, and then the other, um, I'm trying to think the other, those, that would be most of it right there.
I think part of it was Dolores going to full-time in the office, Justin.
That's correct. That's correct. Yep. That was, that was seventeen thousand right there. That's not going to happen.
Part-time.
Correct. Oh, and the audit, because I had two, I had funding for basically two years worth of audits in there. So there's another fifteen, sixteen thousand for that. To try to get the audit.
Would you like to see the same, are, are you asking us to put before the voters the same proposal that?
No, I'm asking you to come up with the
Another proposal.
Pass. Well, I mean, Lewis, what's your fourth vote on the school commit, school budget? They have to keep coming up.
I'm open to suggestion about how we approach this, but of those items that were just identified, um which ones would you cut?
I didn't say I would cut any. I said
So then you would like us to propose a higher budget because you just said voters said no to the first one?
You can change it by a dollar. I don't care. You need to have voter approval to spend money.
It seems like
People are not the governing body of this town. Town manager is not the governing body of this town. The voters are the governing body of this town, and until the voters authorize it, you can't spend it.
But Ed, they approved Article thirty-four.
Read it all the way through. It says you got to have an approved budget.
No, no, we can go back to the latest approved budget until a new budget is approved.
So it's your opinion that voters can vote out something and you can ignore the voters?
The plain meaning of that article.
It's in your opinion that the voters don't mean anything?
No.
That's what you're telling me?
You're saying they don't have, they don't mean anything because they passed Article thirty-four, and you want to uh ignore it?
They passed Article thirty-four because of ill advice from the town manager on the beach program. And the stuck-out signs all over town. Oh, no, on the beach program. Oh, yes, on Article thirty-four, and we get a whole bunch more money. You need to have an approved budget by the voters, and you don't have that. And it says it in Article thirty-four.
Respectfully, respectfully, the plain
I have a solution.
Yeah.
It's an easy one.
What?
I have a solution. It doesn't cost us anything. We're having an election in November. We can operate until November. We'll put on the November ballot a single article to approve uh the budget, and we'll see what happens.
I'll agree with all the others that the chairman brought up that didn't pass.
Uh it seems to me like the administrative budget is the one that
The beach budget was voted down too.
Okay, so then the beach budget would be included with that too, if folks are feeling strongly about that.
You've got to pay for all those other projects that you've got to steal money from deficiency main to pay for.
Beaver Brook Culver was getting thirty thousand, I think, from that rebate. The other fifty thousand was going into Compton Hall Reserve, which got denied, so that'll end up in the undesigned fund balance, I assume. Uh but somewhere, we're going to come up with thirty thousand dollars to finish paying for that Culver project.
If it's in the undesigned fund balance, then without affecting anybody's tax bill, we can put an article that transfers it from the undesigned fund balance to funding the Beaver Brook.
Pretty good.
There you go.
So at some point, we need to have a public hearing, come up with what we want, what we want to vote on and get people's input, so we can put numbers together.
And if we, if we do it in November, then
Not the question you went even with it. Well, you've got to run the separate machine.
Yes, we'll have to print a whole separate ballot.
Oh, that's terrible.
Well, but as he just said, you know, there's no
You don't care.
I'm not saying I don't care. I'm just saying that
Oh, you, yeah, don't do that.
So, so I'm just saying that anytime we are doing another budget, uh another ballot, it costs money.
It does.
So.
Democracy costs money.
Exactly.
You've done, I just want to comment that Article thirty-four, that what's written in there, has been passed every year since we went to this, this type of ballot. And, and, and uh I always thought it was exactly as it was written that it says you can operate at last year's budget until a new budget. So you don't have to go to a meeting if you're fine with going back to last year's budget. And generally speaking, uh that's a reduction. So if someone wants a reduction, but it allows administration to continue. I've, I've been that's the way I've seen it for the past years. It's been voted in every year.
So.
Are you familiar with any time that we've had to use it?
No.
No, I wanted you to be able to finish your sentence. Because I'd like to hear your opinions.
Well, I think Article thirty-four says that if a particular item doesn't pass, we can go back to the prior approved amount. It doesn't have to, I don't know that we have to go back to the same amount, but we have the discretion.
And the meaning the next election or the next budget would be twenty twenty-five.
Or whenever it's
Or whenever, whatever that may be.
That's right.
And it, it seems like a common sense thing, because for instance, if the police department, the fire department got voted down, they could operate at last year's budget and function possibly for
What would be See thirty-four continue to be used, because I know a little bit of the history about it. When I said do it or not, I like, I want to actually keep it, because the history behind it is that Stephen Dyer when Tom Andrew came up with that, Stephen, that plan. Just what we're talking about. It wasn't just fires, like, you know, police. It was things like just general administration. When you find yourself, you have to issue licenses and purchase people's cars. There's all kinds of essential services here in town, and that's why Steve came up with it. I remember discussions, you know, and all my best friends were like, I want about it at the time. That's where that grew from. Stephen A. Dyer.
Other than the printing costs of an additional ballot, what would be the harm of asking the voters to have another election, say in November, where we're all gathered anyway? What would be the harm?
You would be setting the precedent. If you did it, then you'd obviously have to do it, even though we didn't have a national election.
We're already setting a precedent by having to use it in the first place, aren't we?
Yeah. It's certainly, the, the bottom, it's there, it's the same thing, but the bottom line of it is, by the administration, that's four people's lives that are affected financially. So either they don't matter or they do. And we can look at it any way we want, whether it costs us a little bit of money or not. Those four ladies in the town office all lose out on a pay raise. Uh one of them doesn't get to be full-time. There, there's a lot more ramifications than just saying, well, we can work around it and figure it out. You know, and if we wait till November, they lose six months' worth of what their pay raise would have been. You know, we're not going to go back and give them that, are we? You know what I'm saying? It'd affect my family. Yeah.
The town of Harrison just had the same thing happen. They voted down their administrative. And some of the people walked out of the office to come back, and so it's kind of crippled over. I have to work with that office, so they're really short on them. Um I've said previously that I don't like that we're on a part-time basis. They were sacrificial lambs years ago to some budget. I'd like to see full-time hours, infant ladies or employees or or stereotypical, such as male or female, whoever's working there. They want a full-time job. I think the job merits it, and we should be returning it. We, we're still going through the sacrificial budget over there that was years ago. Why are we still short, shorting those guys down there? Why don't we give them full-time hours? Sounds like we need to and have a vote.
So uh the question for the town manager, um could you tell us if we were going to put some limited articles on the November ballot, by what, by what time would we need to have those finalized?
Generally speaking, we need sixty days to have the, it's, it's not just printing ballots. The, the, the issue is, what takes the time is, we're an electronic town. So we have electronic ballot counters, so we have to send our ballots out to a third-party vendor to create them so that the machine can read the responses. So that's what, that's what costs most of the money. It's not just, it's, it's, it's not the paper, and it's not huge money either. I'm not, I'm not trying to pretend that it's massive thing. It's, it's probably, it's about three or four thousand dollars to hold a town election.
So, so Justin, what I'm hearing you say sixty days would put us into the first week of September, that we would need to have something come to fruition, an idea or a set of ideas about how to fund these uh various uh departments. And um uh and then we could presumably uh direct you to, 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 and, and the town attorney at two hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour to uh put all this together in the form of a group of warrant articles.
Sure, yes. Yep, absolutely. And, and just, just so everybody's clear, the, the only funding mechanism at that point is the unassigned fund balance. The commitment will already be made, so unless the board is, is interested, I seriously doubt it. Unless you're interested in sending out, you know, a whole other set of tax bills to people for the additional amount, I would recommend that you take it out of the unassigned fund balance.
That would be more expensive. So uh so we would have to fund it, the, the change in uh uh the various proposals would have to be funded from the unassigned fund balance.
That is correct.
Which is okay. I mean, it's not we're not running out of, we're, we're, we're cash flowing as an entity. Um and that's really the purpose of the unassigned fund balance, is the savings account to make sure that we don't that we have plenty of cash to be able to pay the bills just before the property taxes are starting to be collected. So uh and, and, and uh at last count, and of course, this kind of connects to the audit issue too, chicken and egg. At last count, our unassigned fund balance was something like one point six million dollars?
Yes, that sounds about right. Yep.
And uh of the articles that failed, I'm hearing people say the beach article and the administrative article are the two. Did I miss anything?
The debt service
Oh, debt service.
Is the other one, okay, correct, but just let me pa- pause you all there for a minute. So the SCBA loan fell off this year, so when you back out all the other items that the town turned down, like the police cruiser and some of the other indebtedness, the last year's um debt service article has enough money in it to pay the debt that we have to pay this year. So you can put it on the ballot. Well, you can put it on the ballot for the same reason you want to do the admin one, because if you're, if you want to have, if you want to have the townsfolk have an affirmative voice, then you'd want to include that on there too. But I just wanted to make it clear that that one is, it's not technically short.
So uh, so debt service is a zero sum. Uh we're talking about thirty thousand dollars perhaps in the beach uh department and a difference of eighty thousand dollars if we were simply to do a copy paste, and I'm not suggesting that that would necessarily be how we would do it, but so about a hundred and ten thousand dollars would be the sum total that we would be asking the voters to withdraw from the unassigned fund balance. Does that sound right?
Yes, it sounds about right. Most, most of the admin budget is fixed cost. It includes all of the town's insurances, health, property casualty. All that stuff is in that admin line. So a lot of that stuff, we can't, it's, it's, it's fixed. It's, you know, we can't, I, 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 unless we're able to get rid of employees, which then relieves, relieves us of their health insurance costs. A lot of that stuff is just, it's baked into the cake. So, yeah. But I'd say, I'd say that hundred, that hundred thousand number that you just said, that sounds, you know, off the top of my head, that sounds about right.
Would be the ballpark.
Yes, absolutely.
You know, all right.
Hi. Um I just want to say that in regards to having a special election, um I know that he referred to the fact that we are um a community that has like electronic voting, it can go through the um voting counting machine. I work at City Hall in Lewiston during special elections, and we do the hand counting, which saves us yes, considerable amount of money, because we don't have to send it to the state um to have them then program it to go through our computer, go through the counting, the ballots. Um and we just have people come in and um so many Democrats, so many Republicans, and they count the ballots. Monmouth is far smaller than Lewiston, and I cannot think that we would need to have the number of people there to hand count, shouldn't have a special election. So it is possible in doing it without having the electronic voting machine there. Just putting that out there.
Thank you. I do appreciate the suggestion, and if you held the, if you held the special election on a day other than the presidential election, I completely agree with uh with that commenter, but we're going to have more turnout in November than we will probably ever have. So we'll have a lot of ballots if we
Of course you are, but I know Lewiston has gone through already three sets of special elections for their, for their school budget, and I'm just saying that it is a possibility, should you want to get it done. So it is not something that is like, my God, we can only do it um via um the uh state having the ballots printed for us.
Sure. Appreciate the comment.
So.
We did that.
Yeah.
We used to do that. I used to be one of the frequent participants in that. Enjoyed it.
So it's, uh Mr. Chair, it sounds to me like we have a little bit of time to figure this out. Like a couple of meetings. And in fact, if this is the direction that we decide we want to go, then we should probably officially put it on an agenda so that other folks who might not happen to be in the room, who might have an interest in it could participate. So uh I'm, I'm happy to take other public comment, but I'm wondering if this particular public comment we could table until next meeting, when it's an agenda item, there's been an official public disclosure for it, and we uh uh would have the opportunity to take some action.
Okay. You've done, not, not much has been said about the, the, the debt article voted down. So what is it, what happens when they vote down the debt article? I have not much discussion.
Explain that. You just explained that.
You take it out of
Oh, you're just going to pay it.
Yeah.
Well, actually, no, I think uh what Justin, what I heard Justin explain was that we are paying off debt at a pretty rapid clip. And, and not replacing it with any additional indebtedness, particularly because the articles uh that required debt were not approved. And so our debt service as a town is actually going down. So if we're reverting to last year's debt service numbers, they are more than adequate to cover this, this coming year's uh debt service obligations.
That's right. They're probably higher last year.
Last year.
I don't know if I should mention this, but uh Justin has told me that the, the school budget and our county assessment will add a uh Will add a uh, about a mil to our tax rate anyway. Uh, so. That anything that we do. Uh, won't. Add on to that. But I don't know how much that will be, but. Anything else from uh? Public comment? Yeah.
I just want to thank uh, Public Works for helping. The beach party committee set up the fireworks. Going into us. And um, while I was out there, I noticed we still don't have swim buoys. Is there any plans for those swim buoys? Thank you.
I I was given permission to put the swim buoys out. I just. Don't have the staff to do it, so I'm working on figuring that out, but if I can find a couple of people to help me.
What do you need?
I to be able to carry the leads out.
So how many people do you need?
Two or three.
What are you doing tomorrow morning?
Get the beach. Working on getting stuff ready, so.
I thought we hit some volunteers who are going to do this.
It's gonna rain anyway. I can be there in the morning. Yeah, um. Thursday morning, eight o'clock. I can be. Okay.
Well, lots of people did. Um, to follow up on that. I'm not too confident in the response I'm hearing about lifeguards and. I got a beach party to facilitate less than ten days. I need an answer. Are we gonna have lifeguards? And if not. I need to have a backup plan to have some lifeguards because we're gonna have a thousand people there with probably fifty to seventy people in the water. Um. If I bring in private lifeguards. Can the town cover the insurance on that? So that I'm not burdened with doubling my liability insurance. As a beach party committee member.
Do you know that, Justin?
The the town insurance covers anything that is a town-sponsored event. If it's not, then they will not.
Is it a town sanctioned event?
It's not a town-sponsored event. It's not, it's not, it's not, I mean, it's not a town event. I mean, I mean, it's a town event, right? But it's not a municipal, in the sense the town doesn't. Doesn't pay for it.
So Justin, do you think it's realistic for us to? Uh. To think that the five applications that have been submitted to Town Hall. Will come to some sort of decision. Uh, in time for the July sixth beach party?
Um, I have my doubts because the uh, the agreement requires that they be hired like all other town employees and they have to be vetted. So they need to be interviewed. Those need to be scheduled at a time when Lisa and Lori are available to do that and the applicant is available to do that. I don't want to speak for Lori because she's the one that's gonna have to do this. Um. And knowing that next week is is short, right? Because of the fourth. Um, I don't know what everybody's availability is. I don't want I don't want to promise anybody anything, but certainly I think, you know. It's potentially, but a a lot of things would have to click into place to get somebody hired that fast because they have to fill out paperwork and it has to be filed and.
They had a boy there. Oh, yes, ma'am.
You know, the legislature, when they have former members uh, uh, speak to them, you have to bring candy.
In the past, at these parties. Have we paid the lifeguards that were there?
Yes.
So it came from the town. So why isn't it a town?
Because the town doesn't get money from it.
It's town property.
And we've paid lifeguards in the past, so it's.
Correct, but those lifeguards were town employees at the time. I think what.
But if it's not a, if it's not a town activity, why did we pay them?
Because we were just staffing the beach. The issue is, is that if Dan goes and hires private lifeguards, they're they're not town employees anymore.
We don't have lifeguard on duty. There's nobody swimming at night in the dark.
Excuse me?
Yeah, did you? I just put my hand. I'm also, I'll take care of it. Move on. We'll we'll figure it out. We'll figure it out. I I was just looking, I I just needed to know ahead of time whether I needed to go. Work out another thousand dollars for liability insurance with some lifeguards that I'm gonna privately hire uh, to come on town property and take care of town business. That's all I. I just figured if we had town lifeguards and were paying them and we had insurance. I didn't know if they could operate under the same insurance, but. What the town manager is saying is correct, because I went through this with the previous town manager and. We were. Told him some words that it's not a town sanctioned event, so that's why we had to. Take everything out of the fire department account, put it under the auxiliary account, private now. Is what it is. We're gonna, we're gonna support the town and we're gonna all the businesses, because that's how this was all created under, you know.
Lisa.
I just, so in past. We have. Not had to leave that returning lifeguards. So yes, they've turned in an application again, but we've not had to go through an entire hiring process again. And with this agreement, the way you wrote it, that's what you're saying has to happen, so. My question is, why are we changing the whole process? Like, why can't the returning guards? Start working?
I would agree.
I'd agree with us.
I don't know. It's in. People come and work. See, even my company, they still have to apply, even though they were there before and they still have to get vetted every year. Just the way it works. Just because you, just because you had a job doesn't mean you get a golden ticket to have it for a lifetime.
No, and I I understand that. I'm just saying like they've already filled, these returning people have already filled out applications.
You gotta go through the process, Lisa. Explain yourself.
It shouldn't take four weeks. I agree with that. That's just crazy. Sounds like it's micromanaged.
I would disagree with that. I would say that uh, we're asking all, and this is a number of changes across uh. Uh, a number of departments in the town in terms of making sure. That uh. We are professional in the way that we're hiring. Uh, folks.
A month?
Uh, no, it actually hasn't taken a month. Uh, Justin, could you tell us when those applications arrived at Town Hall?
Um, I I I can't tell you when each one was there, but I mean.
Which was what day? Okay, so that would be about a week ago. Not a month.
Lori has been on vacation.
And so what we are, what? What we're simply asking. For all town employees is to use a consistent hiring process. Should be very simple. We run a business. We use a consistent hiring process. Based on the advice of our attorney that charges us two hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour.
We we we'll get going. Everybody.
That's okay.
Guys. Uh, the next thing on the agenda is to consider a contract with Train for the Compton Hall HVAC uh, project. It's one of the items that did pass. Or uh. The ballot.
So I make a motion to um, approve the contract with Train for the Compton Hall HVAC project.
A second. Is there any discussion? Uh, so Chris has made a motion. Candace seconded it. To consider a contract with Train with the Compton Hall HVAC project. All those in favor? Thank you. And next is to consider the use of the remaining old academy uh, project funding.
I I will start off um, saying the reason that we're having this discussion. Is I had um. Close to a half a dozen people that I've spoken with who have a concern um. About spending the remaining funds that were appropriated. Uh, for the project, so for the purpose of discussion, um, we added it to the agenda. And we've had some people say that. The funding was approved, people voted on it, um, and it should stay on that project and it all should be spent for that. But the problem is, is some of the people that voted for this thing said that I voted yes, because it was gonna be a completed usable project. And of nobody's fault, construction costs changed and that did not happen. Um. And several of them said, I think there's a bunch that we should still try to tie up, not necessarily take all the funding. There are some loose ends that need to be tied up. But had they known that this was gonna turn into a two point five or close to a three million dollar budget with the interest on the loan over the life, that they would not have supported it. So that's why it's on the agenda and that's why we're gonna have the discussion.
The. Well, the bond bank that you you provided that funding for something else, that's not what the bond's taken for. Bond was taken for demolition of the old school and to work on the academy. I've never had the opportunity to use extra funds uh, for other projects in any town. I think if you check with your lawyer, but. You you have to use it for that project. That's what you the voters voted for. And that's what it should be used for.
I I think the intent would be if it does not get used for that, it'll go right back on to the bond to pay down the debt. It won't be transferred to another project. But land.
Big one. There's a a plan in place to use some of the points. And to start with to button them, so they're not just. New plans weren't approved. There's some things. Don't seem to have the correct priority. From my perspective, and I've got eighty-four years of it, but. Anyway, for instance, the south end, on the side of the south end. On the gable facing the fairgrounds is not fixed at all. One thing, but we're. Building sonnet tubes. In front of the. Watch, right? Is there a plan? To do that?
There are people here, Lenny, that can answer that, I'm sure.
Yes, there is a plan. In fact. Uh, at the last meeting, and Mark actually attended that meeting, we talked about buttoning up that building for the winter. Uh, there is no insulation there yet. We still have to insulate it. We were planning on heating it at fifty-five degrees Fahrenheit to keep any damage from taking place inside the building. And uh, we're working on as many projects as we can, lead abatement, getting the front done. Uh. Some of the people on the committee said maybe we should just work on getting the outside done. It's it's completely done and people can see what it is. Otherwise, uh, we need to work on the inside, but we could utilize that three hundred thousand dollars to move this project. Which is already about sixty-five percent done. We are trying to get grants. Steve Eldridge has been writing grants for the Elfon Foundation, Libra Foundation, all kinds of foundations, but. Steve says we don't have an audit. The town doesn't have an audit that's recent, and because of that, we're not getting any grants. So we're stymied that way. Uh, but we have been getting donations. We're working on maybe doing a project to get donations and finish the bell tower, which could be done. Chris has single-handedly raised seventy thousand dollars for donations to get the project going. Somebody has donated twenty thousand dollars worth of uh. Equipment for the kitchen area. And uh. And if we get something going, we can get that twenty thousand dollars worth of equipment inside the building. So the vote was not to give us seven hundred thousand more. The vote, as far as I know, was not to kill the project. And that's a valuable building historically, and uh, it's being redone as a multi-purpose, multi-functional building. It has a valuable piece of real estate here, and it's a valuable asset for the town. And to get rid of the asset and keep the depth doesn't make any sense at all.
That wasn't my suggestion. I asked.
Well, I know, but but Mark kind of indicated that was a suggestion of maybe six people. Although I've talked to more than six people and they said, wait a second, we didn't really want to not, you know, to kill the building. We just wanted to.
We just wanted to raise money in another method.
That's right, and and we can do that. Steve is working diligently, writing grants is not an easy task.
That's so. And so, but if we don't button up the outside, it's not in any point, put stuff inside.
Yeah, well, we're we're trying to do that with the three hundred thousand. Lori could probably better address what we can finish with that three hundred thousand.
Basically, our conversation in the day was to wrap up the outside. The project, you know, get everything in the end on. To make sure that the insulation is installed. I think um, Andrew was saying that we were looking for like an R thirty uh, above and below. On the horizontal planes, fifteen on the on the walls. Then um, doing partial mechanical install. We've been trying to do everything that we, everything we spent money on, we've we've not done a lot of temporary stuff, well. This would require us to downsize the mechanical to manage the um, being fifty-five degree. Uh, temperature in in winter.
And that was closing in the south end of the building.
Yeah, oh, yeah. The ex- the exterior. You should do all all that. Ask the goal.
Could I ask you a question? Why is it so crucial to? Uh, be able to heat the building to fifty-five degrees?
An unhealed uh, space deteriorates. I mean, we've spent nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars on that building so far.
And mold.
Yeah. Yeah, it's fairly mold. Moisture.
And frost heat.
Thank you.
Yes, well, if you look closely at the most recent vote where the people voted down overwhelmingly to say, no more spending of money. This project is short about seven hundred thousand dollars. Now. There's a very good chance, very good chance that this will never. Never be completed, because where's that money gonna come from? Now, you've heard they've they've had three years to raise uh, funds for this. In three years, they've raised seventy thousand dollars. So at that rate. Take thirty years, come up with seven hundred thousand dollars. So and probably the early part of the project, when people were most excited, would be. You know, willing to contribute money, but now when they see it's starting to fail. It the likelihood of it ever getting completed. Is is slim, so if putting any more money into it could be just putting. Good money after bad, which is why I think, reason why people voted this down. You also should note that I have the the original article that we voted on. And people were told, it said, notes, the actual amount borrowed may be reduced by fundraising and grants. So a lot of people thought it wasn't even gonna cost that original amount, that it was gonna be reduced. And it says that that fundraising and grants are supposed to reduce the amount borrowed. So is there any authorization to spend the monies that are coming in? To extend the product project, or should that be going towards reducing the bond?
Question.
Yes.
Um, so I heard Steve say about the audit. So in order to do grants and fundraising of that and to help Steve. Why is it that we can't get an audit? To get that fundraiser and grant, because that's. What's impeding. That effort. So I I guess I need to ask. What's? I mean, that's that's the issue.
So essentially, there's about two audit companies out there that do municipal audits, and they are so overwhelmed and so far behind. And during COVID. It got behind because people couldn't come into the office. Um, but since then, we have utilized an accountant who has everything on QuickBooks that. It makes it easy for to share documents and to share that QuickBooks file. So we, because we do that with QuickBooks, our auditor has agreed to continue to work with us. Because a lot of auditors have stopped working with municipalities because they don't have time and they don't have staff. So we do have an audit that's ready to go. It's a matter of the man that runs the company. Signing his name on it and will have that in hand and be able to move forward. And it's not all audits. It's I it's not all grants, as Steve could say, it's. Like banks. If you go to a bank, they want audits and you can talk more about, you know, those.
Yes, I've talked to some of the people at Angkor Savings and they. Yes, I've talked to some of the people at Bangor Savings and they, one for their foundation would ask for an audit. And I asked them, if you don't have an up-to-date audit, most people looking for three years of audits.
Right.
Um, we didn't have that. Uh, they won't even, they'll look at the application and see that you don't have an up-to-date audits and they would not even consider looking at the rest of the application.
And we don't have a comprehensive plan, right? We don't have.
Well, that would help, but the money thing is bigger because you're asking for money. There's no way that they can guarantee that you're responsible for you, how you use money. Because they can't look at your audit. Even after you get money for these people, you have to submit audits every single year of of what you're doing.
So my question is, is when, when is, when will that be completed?
So let's go full circle to our, the part of the conversation that happened about thirty minutes ago. We're going to have uh two fiscal years ago audit will be submitted. Hmm, it's pending. We have one more signature to get before it is final. And we will have it in hand, although we've been told it'll be in hand for the last six weeks. So just needs one more signature and we will have the fiscal year, not last year, but the year prior to that. Um, last year's fiscal year's audit has been confounded by the turning down of the administrative article in the election last year, uh, uh, last week. So uh, in that budget that was turned down was an extra sum of money to get us caught up on audits. We don't have that because we're reverting to the previous year's budget at this point. And that means we're not going to be able to afford to pay somebody to create two audits in one year. We will be one year behind until we have a budget approved by the voters that allows us to move forward with two audits in a single year. So I am not a person comfortable sitting on his hands, but unfortunately, that is where we are.
And I know that uh, from having listened to people talk about uh, that finding auditors is a problem. Uh, they don't want to take on little towns like Monmouth. And I don't know, Steve has been a town manager in a lot of places. I don't know your experience.
We used to put out audits, we've got bids for audits every, every three years. And over the last ten years, uh, we have only had one company offer to do our audits. And others are giving out, out of approximately. They, they, just to let you know, they don't, they spend a lot of time doing them and they don't make a lot of money. And so they are making money in other ways. These municipalities and school districts are in a very hard place when you should have it audit done on an annual basis, having to.
You're preaching to the choir.
Yeah.
Been a topic of just about, well, Mark will tell you every meeting.
Can ask almost every meeting about the audit. But it's one of those things you can, you only want to push so far in hounding them because if you hound them too much, they're going to say, we're done. Find someone else to do it and then we're in real trouble. At least it's being we're we're moving forward somewhat versus standing completely still. Yeah, this uh, I wanted to comment on that building next door. Um, had a, had a lot of people, a lot of conversations with a lot of people, so I'll trump Mark six by a whole bunch. And that the the general consensus was that at this point, we're throwing good money after bad. And my only comment to them, to everybody that I chatted with about was, we need to make the outside weather tight. I was in Coast Guard for twenty years and we dealt with sealing up lighthouses when the Coast Guard went away from manning lighthouses. Um, the biggest thing we did was tear the plaster down because it was all going to fall down. There have been lighthouses that have been closed up for, since in the eighties now, that are still closed up. They're still standing. They get zero maintenance. We're going to be maintaining the outside of this thing forever. So it's not like it's going to fall down if we don't spend three hundred thousand dollars. And I'm sorry, spend a hundred to button up your outside and take the two fifty and put it back on the lawn and save the taxpayers money. Because that's what the taxpayers are telling you. They don't want to spend no more money. And don't, don't put money down the yellow hole in the snow.
So using that rationale, the voters voted down a feasibility study for the fire department. So um, so using that rationale, to me, I'm like, okay.
Control there.
So, but I think.
But let us save the conversation. Let us.
So, you know, but it's also, they voted down um, the, the police car. So do we not, do we not give the chiefs the money to repair the police car? So that's just, you know, using that rationale doesn't make sense to me. So, I mean, that's my two cents, but everybody knows where I stand on this project. So I have people here that can offer other opinions instead of hearing me say the same things over and over again. And we've got some people in this room that know a whole lot about that building and have put a lot of time and effort into it.
You?
Um, Mark made a statement several meetings ago, within months of any days, and I think it resonates. Um, I don't, I disagree with the last comment. Mark's comment was, we've come this far, we haven't money spent. It's too late to turn back. I think that's what he was trying to say with me, not necessarily verbatim or per se. I think that makes a lot of sense. Um, could you name off the people that are on the committee, Chris? Who are the primary people?
Don Hodson is our chair. Don's here tonight. Um, Dr. Bougie, uh, Steve Brown, who is, you know, been there, done that with every type of construction, ran jobs for Peachy Builders. He's had, been hands-on through this whole project, visiting routinely and seeing what's going on. Doug, myself. Steve stepped up and asked to help with um, grants because I was writing grants and doing what I could do without having ever done them before. And thank goodness for Steve to step forward. So um, we also have our architect here with us tonight, Paul Lewandowski, who has spent a lot of time working with us on a plan and knows how close we are, how close we are to coming to completion for this project.
Lori McGifford is also on.
And Lori Gifford. Sorry, I'm sorry. She, I'm looking around the room and and Lori's up up there. I don't know if she still has her hand up from her first question or if she has another, something to say.
I, I do, and everybody knows exactly how I feel about this project. It's um, I'm very passionate about it. My feeling is I think we need to remind people that we were promised when the Helen Melody Hall was done, that it was going to be a community building. Um, I have had several people, I myself have reached out to use that building and we have been told, no, you cannot. It is not a community building. This building that we're trying to do right now in the restoration is going to be a community building. We are going to allow meetings to happen there. We are going to have small functions. Yes, Dan, we can only have a few people. We can't have two hundred and fifty people there, but we can have a small function there. Um, we're going to have the kitchen um, that is going to be able to be utilized. There's going to be showers there in the event of an emergency. The Helen Melody Hall was supposed to utilize in the event of an emergency. There are no showers. If if Dan had to send his fireman there, there'd be nothing for them to use. This building is, it is our history. It is our history. It is like Comston Hall. And I think people are tending to forget that.
To that one.
I think that we use the rest of the three hundred thousand dollars that the town voted for us to use to get to the completion as much as we can and we are busting our butts to try to get more money. I have been on the phone, I have been sending things out to alums and I've been told checks are coming in the mail, which I will touch base with the town office tomorrow. Um, I know there are a lot of people who they don't give a rat's patootie about Monmouth Academy because they weren't here in the beginning. I have been here since nineteen fifty seven and ran those halls. And that is a historical building. Unfortunately, we let our process go when we were trying to get it on the registration. Um, I just don't see how the town can take the money away from us um, because they just feel that they should. I'm I'm sorry. I'm very passionate about it. I think that we have tried everything that we can. I am worried about our town, about a lot of the things that got voted down. Um, I'm glad that we're getting the town beach back up and running. It never should have gotten to this point that we are now facing July fourth and Dan having to find um, lifeguards from someplace else. So I say I'm totally against this presentation of taking the three hundred thousand dollars away.
Well, I just, I want to cross the list of who was there so that people could hear some pretty heavy hitters, some dedicated people. Um, I'm thinking Dr. Bougie, for example. He's done some pretty extraordinary things with an old building here in town, United Church of Monmouth, which is very historic. Um, there's a lot of people, you know, Steve is a town manager, the things that he's done, they have a great talent. Why can't we trust these people? We've watched them succeed elsewhere. We know they're capable and we're, we're saying, no, we want to take this away from them. Also, let's stop and go to the integrity of the vote. I don't know that I never feel confident going to the polls again. If this money was taken away, whether you agree with it or not, the people cast their vote, the money is there, they said, do it for this. This was five, eight, ten years from now. I might say, let's have a special meeting. This is, we're stalled too long. But was there any time limit on when this had to be done? I don't think that there was. So I still feel we're in a reasonable timeframe and we should let these folks, who use their talents and abilities, continue the job. Excuse me, the townspeople spoke. Let's keep the integrity of the vote intact. I think it casts a pall upon any future votes indefinitely if we take the money back.
And I just want to add, right now, we have an asset. But if we get rid of that asset, we still have the debt and the debt's got compounded interest. So I'd rather have a debt with an abscess, uh, an asset than a, a debt without an asset.
Yes, I know I, I give this information to Kristen. Uh, historically, and it's across the country, for every dollar you invest in your community, in old buildings, historic buildings, new buildings, you get eight dollars back. That's a pretty good return on your money. And it's a beautiful building. Uh, you have thirty six, thirty five hundred and sixty seven voters in this town. Less than eight hundred people turned out to vote in the last two local uh, it's, that's a pretty small number. Uh, considering we have thirty, almost thirty six hundred people. And and these articles were pretty serious. They had seven hundred people, eight hundred people turn it down. Pretty sad. And I think they turned everything down from my perspective as prior manager. They were very angry about something and they just went through and said, no, to every single article. What they were angry about, I don't know, but it's pretty. We need to take care of our infrastructure. No, that's, if we don't invest in ourselves, nobody is going to come to town and invest in this town. And that's how you build your tax base. I want more people like the Bates Mill to come in here. Uh, you need clean businesses like that. We have, we have the community. It's a great community. We have the people. We just got to do things a little bit better.
Yes, Paul.
So as the architect on the project, I'd take a few moments to talk about the process that is under this bill. So we had an initial budget and we had a goal of restoring the hall. Um, we also faced an unprecedented uh increase in material costs and labor costs. So at that time, we looked at the budget and we decided what we could prioritize um, for a phase one, assuming that there'd be a phase two in the future was unknown, what that was going to be. But for phase one, our goal was to restore the exterior of the building and to um stabilize everything. So the building would stand and future work could happen inside. So that includes the exterior trim work, the brick, the new windows, new insulation on the inside. That heating system, albeit diminished, that Don spoke of. Um, and that gets you to a building that is stable and won't deteriorate further. Yes, it will cost extra money to refurbish the inside and use the building as it was promised, but this is not the fir, the only project that I've worked on or or other architects I've spoken to, worked on that have faced these, these increasing costs. We've all seen costs going up. It wasn't something anyone expected. Nobody predicted COVID. But the committee and I interfaced with all of them as we're working this project, worked very hard to figure out how we can get this to a state that was stable with the money that we had. And that is what that remaining three hundred thousand dollars plus or minus will do. So to take that money away now would jeopardize the stability of the building. And in essence, all of the money that was put into the project would sort of be wasted. Um, it doesn't get you a finished building. That's what the additional money was for and that was voted down by the town. That's history at this point, but keep that additional money in place to at least complete the plan that the committee had developed, that we'd all worked on um, to get this built stable and complete is where we are. So can't speak to the politics. I can just speak to the technical side of this and that's what I'm trying to do. Happy to answer any questions.
And I have to disagree with Steve. It's not an asset. It's a gigantic liability on the town. It'll never pay for itself. The taxpayers will always have to support it. Somebody's got to manage it. So you're going to have to hire a manager if you think you're going to rent it out, competing against places like an East Winthrop and Over Green and such, where taxpayers put their own money up to build things and rent out. It's not fair to businesses to invest in their business to compete against taxpayer subsidized business. The building will always be a big liability. Now, if you think there are grants out there, you're kidding yourselves. Like, few grant-granters are overwhelmed with applications for grants. Bangor Savings, for example, if you get all the way through, customers of Bangor Savings are asked to vote on what Bangor Savings donates to. So you have to get all the way through the Bangor Savings requirements that the customers of that bank make those decisions. Every year, you get a thing from them, a list of the things that they have approved, vote for one. So, folks, you know, I feel bad about the building. I went to a school called ACI up in Marsh Hill that was built way back in those Boondock days. Very historic building. The bricks of it are lying in the pond by the dam up there now. Because the cost of trying to maintain that building and such was too much. And the cost of trying to maintain and use this building is too much. I say, ask some nonprofits to come and take it over and unfortunately, we're going to have to eat the unwisest vote we had in nineteen twenty one based on, oh, we're going to get all kinds of grants, so we won't spend any. We won't have to get the taxpayers for anywhere near that amount of money. Thank you.
Before Steve takes off again, um, Steve was in, it was either four weeks ago or six weeks ago and put the question to us, when did the select board know that the funds were going to run short? And when you knew the funds were going to run short, why didn't you take the steps to stop the spending to figure out what would happen moving forward? Uh, and my answer to that was, we didn't have any indication, the taxpayers voted to do this. There's no indication to tell us that we should stop spending money on this thing. We've got another vote coming up to finish funding the balance. Um, but now we do have an indication from the voters that they may not want to move forward. Um, and I think it's our job as the select board to do what the voters want us to do. Um, and they wanted us to spend this money.
But you don't really, I mean, you're just going with hearsay. You know, someone said, well, I talked to six people. Do you have a vote from the voters that this is definitely a dead?
We have a vote that was five to one saying we don't want to.
What was the vote for?
The vote was for the additional funding.
Yes, but did they actually say we're, we want the project killed?
No, and I haven't.
Okay, so you're extrapolating. You're going, you're saying the voter said, get rid of it.
I would feel more comfortable if we let the voter say, should we move forward with this? I would feel more comfortable if we let the voter say, should we move forward with this?
Correct.
Um, or should we stop this? Because it's not my choice and it's not anyone's person's choice. But if we were going to have a special election um coming up soon and put this back to the voters and say, what should we do with this? And we would move forward with what the voters, we're just here to do what the voters want us to do. When they say spend money, we spend money. When they say don't spend money, then we don't spend it.
But you don't have a definite, you know, result of a vote by the voters yet.
To stop, no, we do not.
Okay.
But we have an indication telling us this might be an issue.
Wouldn't it be fiscally responsible of you people to ask the voters what they want to do, spend the three hundred thousand or not? Finish up the outside, top it up? Wouldn't that be fiscally responsible?
And that's our plan, that is exactly our plan.
Spending the three hundred thousand, you're not just doing the outside, you already just said, your architect even said, you're doing insulation on the inside, doing all this stuff on the inside. Preserve the building, I've seen a lot of buildings.
Insulation is part of the process to complete the building, try to be stable.
Oh, yes.
That's, who's that basically?
You are, okay. I have a solution, I've been thinking about this. There's so many different emotions going on with this, and some of the members of the board have worked very hard. You know, you're really connected with the building, uh, and it'd be tough to make a decision. So I think we need an independent person to help us out. And I'm, my suggestion will be that the town manager take the task on of making a recommendation to this board for you to vote on. He should review all the financials, everything that's been said, all the votes, go back and look it all over. And come up with, he's an independent person who could, who could do. His task should be to do what's in the best interest of this town. Put it forward to you folks to vote on it and then decide where you go from there. That's going to be my suggestion to solve this matter.
Well, I, I have a question for the architect, if, if I may. Um, could you give us an idea? Of uh what the various pieces of construction. Are going to cost in terms of, how much does it cost to take care of the soffit that's so troublesome? And how much does it cost for us to get to a completely weather tight? Condition? And then how much does it cost for us to keep the building at fifty-five degrees in an efficient way?
Working with the contractor who's on the project, Nickerson, okay. We had developed a budget that would get to a building that was stabilized. So the remaining part of that budget, which is the three hundred thousand dollars plus or minus, is the money that gets the building to be stabilized. So that includes all of the exterior and the minimal amount that we need to do on the interior, including insulation and a reduced heating system. I can't speak to the energy costs of, of what that will cost, um, off the top of my head, but.
It's been estimated that it's going to be about five hundred dollars a month.
Well, that was for all the utilities, including water and sewer, which obviously.
Presumably you'd be heating it to sixty-eight degrees.
No, fifty-five. Oh, oh, at that point, yes, for everything with sewer and water, yes.
And somebody who went to Super, I mean, uh, like a Dennis Price who would uh take care of the building.
But the plan to stabilize the building was developed with the committee and the contractor. Money that we had to spend was what we were working towards, so that's what the contractor is building.
And so what would be the risks if we didn't do the insulation and the. Uh, scaled, the scaled back heating systems? I mean, that's basically what I'm hearing being debated here. What? How much does that cost and what are the risks if we didn't do that?
The risks of the building is, it would be unstable to some extent. You'd have freeze thaw cycles happening with the brick. Um, the building was always conditioned before. Uh, I'm not sure how to answer, how else to answer that question with uh. Other than saying that the, the plan is to have the minimal amount of work done to stabilize the building and provide it as an enclosed heated space to a certain degree, fifty-five degrees.
Dawn, as a masonry person, can you extrapolate on making sure the brick is conditioned?
Well, you know, it's a, I think it's a double or triple.
Triple.
Triple. Um, and bricks are what are water management systems. The water. Sincerely, they do move water from the, you know, the outside, inside. Um, you know, free stuff, free stuff, I'm talking, I mean, I think. Um, free stuff, if not a good. Opportunity for maintaining the integrity of the building, meaning it's with eighty-five, fifty-six. It's brick, so um, it's not, it's not a healthy thing for a building, a brick building. We left unattended like that, you know, downstairs, there's quite a bit of moisture in the basement. You know, pardon me. Yeah, and we want to, we want to make sure that that doesn't happen. Control the degradation of the.
Or you have your hand up yet?
I do. I just wanted to address what Steve said about having uh perhaps an independent person look at this. Um, that is an option, but I have to disagree as far as saying our town manager would be independent because he is hired by us. And you are his bosses, and so I think if we had someone independent, it would need to be somebody truly independent. From the situation. But Steve has a point. I don't always agree with you, Steve, but I am now.
Yes, you. I'm not going to say too much more about the discussion, but I do want to recognize two groups. Like recognize the committee that's on the building. That's had to go through a lot of scrutiny lately, and I appreciate the fact that they've dedicated themselves and the task and they're continuing to move forward full speed ahead. Like the US Navy or somebody, so I appreciate that diligence and the evening excitement. I also want to say thank you to the board of selectmen, who I've been really disappointed to see. Accusatory tones broken to them. Normally in the room right now, there's only about two people that could stand up at a normal year, that would be Chief Roy and myself. Most everyone else is not present, we're here almost every week for months and years at a time, there's a few others occasionally, but. Um, we've watched this board, we, we know the integrity they have. They can be trusted, that they're trying to do the right thing. And they're human beings, they make mistakes just like we do, but I want to say thank you. And hopefully I haven't felt too discouraged the last few meetings or months, because there are people out there that appreciate the fact that you say steadfast and take all this crap that's been thrown at you.
Thank you.
I just want to add, work is being done every day over there, so that three hundred thousand dollars you're talking about is being spent every week. So if you want to get an independent person and you take a month or two months, it might be a mute point. I, I have to say that we've had the select board. Uh, particularly has had a, a difficult uh. Few months. Uh. Because uh. Well, because of the beach, it was a primary thing. Uh. We've um. All that, all that went on uh connected with that was uh very difficult for me, I think for the other members of the. The committee, um. Anyway, oh.
I, I've got a, an interesting observation, Mr. Chair, a question for the audience. Uh, Chris has done a job of uh fundraising some seventy thousand dollars from various people in our community. And if, if we were to. There wasn't any mumbling back in the back room, was there? Because that's seventy thousand dollars more than anyone else raised. That was seventy thousand dollars more than anyone else raised. Yeah. So if we were to, if, if our choices are too extreme, right? Spend the three hundred thousand or not, if we were to not spend the three hundred thousand. What would that mean to those folks who have invested seventy thousand dollars? On a promise?
In reality, Kent, the bottom line is that the building's still not going to be finished, whether you spend the three hundred thousand or not. That's reality. So whether they're going to be disappointed about their seventy thousand dollar donation or not, that's irrelevant, because. The end product is still, it's not finished, period.
Could be period or could be yet.
I lean on towards the yet, it's going to be finished.
That's right.
And remain optimistic.
That's right.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think uh, I'm maybe being what they call Pollyannaish or whatever, but I'm looking at the. Uh, but uh, I think it's going to uh, Steve's going to. Make sure it all works.
No pressure, Steve.
Yeah, no pressure.
And the project will get done. May take some time, but it will get done. And it's because of the people who stand behind it, who have tried to make. And there's a lot of people who stand behind them, among them. I've even gone after my own children to contribute. They don't even live here. But uh, it's a great project, investing in yourself and your community. And uh, just saving one of your historic buildings instead of tearing it down or banning it. It's a building, I guess I'd ask the builders in this room, if you were to build a building. Uh, that size square footage, what would it cost you today to build something like that? Expensive, a lot more than what?
I, yeah, I don't know that I want to really answer that question because I, it is a brick building and to do the architecture that's done, it's like.
It'd be expensive.
It would, it would be expensive.
More than what we're spending.
Um, I don't know that, Steve, uh.
You'll have to remember too, you had one point seven. It was for the academy and demolition of the building attached to it. And that demolition, I'm not sure how many people know this. It's almost five hundred thousand dollars, just to demolish and get rid of it. A lot of the hazardous waste in that building, a lot of. It was a good sized building, and so that one point seven was not one point seven for the academy. It was more like one point two or three. Information.
So many towns have uh, like Portland for one, they tore down that old train sta- train station. And e- ever since, they've regretted. Uh, so many towns have done that, they've taken down historic buildings and then, oh my God, we should have saved that. Uh. And this thing is, you know, our mom of the academy is going on since eighteen oh three. And this building was bet built in eighteen fifty-five. Uh, and I think if we uh, we can't lose that. It was far more important to the town before Compton Hall came along.
And the only reason Compton Hall exists is because Dr. Comston's family moved to Monmouth from Scarborough. To put their children in Monmouth Academy, so Dr. Comston graduated from Monmouth Academy, and that's why we have Compton Hall.
Steve, uh. The only reason the, no, uh, sorry, the Panama Cow, the town.
Now, yes.
Was built. Because of the, the work of a man who went to Monmouth Academy, graduated from there and uh. Sorry.
Okay, Steve Kalinda, you, you made a suggestion that the town sell the academy. Um, putting in a proviso that they can't tear down the building. That they would have to rehab it for maybe condos or something, some private use. Did you want to expand on that idea?
I would say that if you put it up for sale, the sale would be pending approval by the people of Monmouth, who would go to a vote. That, that, that whatever project would be get, be approved. So they couldn't just do anything, they would have to say, we're going to do, we're going to put apartments for elderly people in there. And, and if the town approved it, but if they said no, it couldn't, so that would be a caveat on the sale. And for whatever could come in there. We'll do the same thing with Compton Hall.
Well, and Augusta did that with the old fort across the river and the developers bought them. You know, signed the contract, did everything, but never did a, a single improvement on that, and the city of Augusta has been fighting them legally. At probably what, two hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour to uh get them to live up to their agreement with the old fort.
What was the arsenal?
Yeah, the arsenal, thank you, thank you.
Kent?
That, that was a disaster, but, but, but there have been other successful projects, Steve and schools.
I got, all right. Oh, sorry, Kent, this is the one thing about being zooming and not being there, but I look like the wrath of God and I just had surgery. So I just wanted to address your question about how would those people have contributed already feel. Um, my family and I have contributed and we would be devastated if this project did not continue. We devast, we donated in uh memory of my dad, who was principal from nineteen sixty-six. Uh, I'm sorry, from nineteen fifty-seven to nineteen sixty-six, and then he became superintendent till nineteen eighty-four. I would be devastated if, if my investment went for naught. So that's, that's how I would feel as somebody who has contributed to try to get this done.
The masons have donated money to us. Um, the. D and E Roofing. The Goldstone Family Foundation, fifteen thousand dollars. From.
That's savings.
Ben Kennebec Savins gave us twenty-five thousand dollars. And when they said they'd give us money, they asked if they would have a plaque in their name, so I guess. You know, so how do you explain that to those folks? Um, that's where it leaves us. I mean, some, there's been a lot of small businesses in town that have donated money. And um, they've been very generous, and whenever I am out at. Mayfair or Apple Fest. People give twenty dollars here, five dollars there. Kids buy postcards for a dollar, you know, all of those little things. And um, you know, I, I just want to reiterate what Mr. Eldridge said is that if we don't invest in ourselves, who else? Will want to come here and invest in us? If they're seeing us stopping a project that could move the town forward. Who would want to be a part of that? And build a business there without any support whatsoever?
Perhaps someone can come back with a plan that shows us. How the remaining money is going to be used.
And we have, we have that plan, we know how much money we have left, and we met with the general contractor yesterday.
Yes.
I think he's putting that together, Dawn, correct? He's got those numbers, we met yesterday morning, so that's always a process to come up with those numbers.
Well, I, I haven't seen that.
Well, no, we met with the contract, the general contractor yesterday morning, so he was putting together the final numbers for the budding, button, buttoning it up.
Yep. Don't we need to have that information before we vote on?
I would think so.
If I make a motion, we table this matter until next meeting. Hopefully we'll have the, the plan by that time.
Second.
Thank you.
But any other discussion?
This will minimize this.
Oh, yes, Mrs. uh.
I, I just have a question. Can you guys even legally vote to change what the town people voted for in twenty twenty-one? Do you have that authority to override that vote and change it now? I think that's more important to look into.
I don't feel like we would have the right to override it, but I think we would have the right to put it back to the taxpayers and say. Given what has happened, do you still want us to move forward with you previous decision?
I just feel like that's a better place to start than this whole.
Jamie, what, what is within our power is to authorize the expenditure or not. Right, as the executive branch, we're not the legislative branch of the town, we're simply the doers of what the voters tell us to do. So.
That's, I guess my part of that is if COVID didn't happen, this money would have already all been spent. So this would be a mute point and they wouldn't have gotten the extra money because of this most recent vote. Do you guys have the power to change what the previous vote had when this vote strictly went on the extra money, not?
Well, I think what Steve Kalinda is saying is that perhaps we could pause. Expending money until we have a chance to check back with voters. That's one of the suggestions that I've heard tonight. And of course, the response to that from uh other concerned folks is that if we put a pause without weather tightening the building. There could be damage.
Table stops debate. Well, she really a contractor, who's on the contract, I would assume. Signed up to do this work. signed up to do this work, so. Not sure how, how we go over. We're not in the joint here for two weeks.
You won the table, you made a motion.
I made a motion to table.
And second, and Joe seconded it. So. All those in favor of the tables? Thank you. And then I want to, uh, consider the slate for the MMA Legislative Policy Committee.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul.
That door is locked. So you'll have to use the main door. Sorry.
We want to see your ten thousand stacks.
And, uh, we, there's a, you know, I guess you've seen this.
Yeah.
The official ballot.
We have, yeah, we have a, uh, two candidates, uh, and it says vote for two, um, for Gary Lamb, who's city's manager of Hollowell, and Anthony Wilson, who is the town manager of Withrow. How do you feel about these two candidates? For the MMA Legislative Policy Committee?
I make the motion, we approve the slate for the MMA Legislative Policy Committee as.
Second. You have feelings about this, Mr.?
Uh, no, I have specifically no feelings whatsoever. Leave it blank. I think we table the matter and move on. Because I don't know any, I mean, I know the name of Anthony Wilson.
But you don't know Gary Lamb?
And I just know the name. That doesn't mean anything.
So Gary, Gary is currently one of the two reps from our senate district. I am the other one. If I am elected to be vice president of MMA, then I cannot serve. So Anthony has um, stepped forward to, to serve in that. These are the people that would represent um, our district in legislative matters that are before MMA. So like last year, we, we had a couple of proposals that I kind of helped push along, as you can recall, about the dump picking and things like that. These would be the people that would do that on that committee to try to get MMA to, there's ninety members. And to try to make sure that they, they would advocate for Monmouth on legislative issues that are before the legislature that affect municipality. So that's what these people are. So you can either, you're, you're welcome to table it, you're welcome to support their nomination, but all towns do have to take a position on it. As a member of MMA, you get to decide who your elected people are. So.
So I, 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 I make a motion, we, uh, a motion.
Joe's already seconded it.
So Justin, I assume of the ninety people, they put forward these two, given the fact that they thought they were the best two to do this job?
Yes, and oftentimes, um, they're reaching out to try to find people that are willing to do it. Because it is a big time commitment and, um, whether it be select board members, like you all are eligible to be on LPC, but when they, when they meet, they meet once a month and it's, uh, it's, it's a whole day. So i- it is a lot of work. I mean, you'll go through, sometimes they go through thirty, forty, fifty bills in a day to try to get positions on, on what MMA's position is. But yes, Mark, to basically say that, they, they have either reached out, uh, Gary's trying to get reelected, so he has experience and, uh, uh, Anthony is interested in, uh, basically learning the ropes at this point. So, yes. They are interviewed by a committee, uh, which represents the old, uh, there are several people, there are members of the Legislative Policy Committee that are on it, there are old, there are past presidents that are on it, there are elected officials that are on the nominating committee and they put these, this slate forward for you, kind of on your behalf, so you don't have to, you know, vet these people on your own. So they're trying to make it easy for you.
Yep. So there's, there's a motion. In favor of the motion? And it's in favor?
Yep. Oh, you put me down as fair. It's unanimous.
Are you, is it, are you down?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, it's amazing.
So, uh, may I be unanimously? Um, and next is the, uh, you ready for this?
I am.
Number twenty-five for fiscal year twenty-three and four.
Uh, expenditures over a thousand, Blue Rock Earthworks for materials transport from the transfer station, two thousand nine hundred seventy-two dollars. Dennis K. Burke, gas and oil, one thousand eight hundred ninety-four dollars, sixty-four cents. Tipping fees for EcoMaine, two thousand, two dollars, eighty cents. S O Solutions for Fire Department IT Support, two thousand five hundred fifty-four dollars and thirty-six cents. Criminal Industries for demo, uh, removal at the transfer station, five thousand eight hundred twelve cents. Commercial tire for Fire Department Vehicle Repairs and Maintenance, five thousand one hundred ten dollars and eighty-eight cents. Spectrum Enterprise for public, uh, for all of our telephone services. One thousand two hundred ninety-four dollars and ninety, twenty-nine cents. Uh, Bureau of Motor Vehicles for plates, titles, all of that fun stuff. Five thousand seven hundred forty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. For a total of thirty-one thousand six hundred forty-four dollars and eighty-one cents.
I make a motion, we approve, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-three, twenty-four, warrant number twenty-five.
Second.
Kent's made a motion, and Chris has seconded it to approve warrant number twenty-five for twenty-three. Uh, fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, all those in favor?
I make the motion, adjourned.
I got all those in favor.
Good night.